...side, who I think has a few words which he would like to say to explain why we're all wearing, you know, bow ties up here.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Many of us have spent many years sitting with Mr. Slavin. This is his last town meeting, sitting at this desk. It certainly won't be his last town meeting. One of his signatures is a bow tie. So many of us who have worked with him are wearing charming bow ties in honor of Mr. Slavin, including the crew from WCTV, who have some really groovy bow ties, as well as the town employees. I just want to thank you all very much for, it's a small token of appreciation for Mr. Slavin, who, this will be his last town meeting, his 12th year as a selectman. Thank you.
Tonight actually starts the Passover holiday, so I'd like to wish my fellow brother in the Jewish faith happy Passover. I thought it was important for me to actually be here rather than there. Tonight is my last town meeting as a select board member. I would like to thank all of you who take time to participate in your local government. My family has always given back. It's expected and required. I believe I have fulfilled the obligation with 18 years of service to the town of Wareham. I have given, I've given Wareham. I need to thank the voters, the residents, the non-resident landowners, the business people, and finally, all of the town employees. You have made it possible to fulfill my personal obligations. Sorry. To the town employees, I can't thank you enough to accept me and allow me to work with you and for you. I will miss all that I have experienced. There's time for another to help Wareham. The only other thing I have to say is the Alanis, the Andy Slavin comedy hour, probably will no longer continue. Thank you very much.
So at this time, I would like to ask you to rise, if you are able, for the presentation of the colors by Wareham High School Junior ROTC.
Carried. Right. Face. Forward. Marked on. March. Colored. Left.
So we'll now say, say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. And now Kat Jones will sing the National Anthem for us. And those of you who can carry a tune, that would not be me, feel free to, feel free to join if you wish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Right. Face. Forward. March. Marked on. March. Colored. Post. Right. Face. Ready. Post. Present. Arms. Order. Arms. Left. Face. Forward. March.
So thank you to the Wareham J.R. OTC and to Kat Jones. is to call a roll call of the department heads, which I'll now do. Administration.
Here.
Accounting. Assessors. Collector/Treasurer. Information Technology. Town Clerk. Planning/ Zoning. Emergency Medical Services. Harbor Master Natural Resources. Police. Inspections. Municipal Maintenance. Board of Health. Council on Aging. Library. School Department. All right, so the meeting, which had been suspended, is now resumed. I understand that our state senator, Mark Pacheco, is here. I'd like to recognize him. He has, I believe, a presentation for Mr. Slavin.
This is the quietest town meeting I've ever come to. Must have had some great discussion just before I came in. Let me just say, Alan, I forgot my bow tie. But I did want to be here to present you with a Commonwealth citation on the occasion of your 12 years of service to the, to the town, and all the work that you have done for so, so many, so, so many years on behalf of the townspeople. This is a Commonwealth State Senate official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Alan Slavin, in recognition of your 12 years of service to the Wareham Select Board and for many years of dedicated service to the greater Wareham community. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. And this citation be signed by the President of the Senate, which it is, and attested to by the Clerk of the Senate. And it's my honor at this time to present it to you on behalf of the townspeople of Wareham and all the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Congratulations. I miss you.
All right, so here we are. Just a reminder, some ground rules, if you will. This meeting will be governed by Massachusetts general laws, the Wareham bylaws, tradition, and to the extent that they conform to the conditions of this meeting, Roberts Rules of Order, and town meeting time. We have, and I think for a long enough period of time to call it a tradition, unless there is some objection, per our tradition, the proponent of an article will have five minutes to speak, and each subsequent speaker will have two minutes. So we have in the hall two microphones about halfway up the, halfway up the auditorium. If you wish to speak on an article, please stand at one of the microphones. I will do my very best to recognize speakers in the order that they stand. If you aren't able to stand, please let a teller know, and they will let me know so that you will be able to speak. When I recognize you to speak, please state your name. And I would also ask this, that we please treat each other, the other voters, guest speakers, with respect and courtesy, such as you would want for yourself. We are here, as I'm sure you know, to debate the important business of the town, which is before this town meeting, and not to personally attack each other. There should not be any back and forth debate amongst speakers. Speakers are only allowed to speak when I recognize them. I'd also ask, though it's sometimes hard to, to do, that there not be any clapping, booing, et cetera. It can sometimes have a little bit of an intimidating effect on other speakers. Any questions that you might have after you've been recognized should be addressed first to me as moderator, and I will ask if there's someone present that can address your question. Typically, there is. If you do not have the floor, again, I would ask that you extend courtesy to the voters that are around you, and please do not disrupt the other voters or get in the way of their being able to hear and participate. I would also like to take the opportunity to thank the town clerk, the members of the select board, the members of the FINCOM, the deputy moderator, and WCTV for their contributions for making this town meeting happen. And I would also like to thank, though I don't see them right this moment, the, the tellers that have volunteered their time. So at this time, I would like to introduce the Chair of the Board of Select, the Select Board, and ask if you would like to make an opening statement, and also to introduce some members of your board, if you would.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This evening, beside me is Mr. Jared Chadwick, who is the clerk. Mr. Ron Dessey is on the other side of Mr. Slavin, and Mr. Alan Slavin, I think you all know Mr. Slavin. I don't need to say anything other than what I said earlier in the meeting, which is, thank you for wearing your bow ties, and thank you for honoring Alan.
And I'd like to also introduce the Chair of the Finance Committee, Norma Scoggan, and ask if she might introduce some members of her committee and make any opening statement that you might wish to make.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Norma Scoggan. With me up here tonight is Dominic Camerano, Jody Smith, Jerry Stefanski, Brianna King, Heidi Churchill, Julie Barran, and Matt Rose. And we appreciate your participation here. This is our busy time. We've spent a lot of time getting ready for tonight and given a lot of thoughtful consideration to what you'll be voting on, and this is the last step, and we appreciate your help.
Thank you. So now we can proceed to the articles that are in the warrant. And the first thing that I will take up would be a motion with regard to a so-called consent agenda. And these are items which we think are routine items that typically do not have any controversy or debate, and we would propose to take them up as one package. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda, and then what I will do is just go through each of the articles that's on the consent agenda. If anyone wishes to be heard on them, they will be taken off the consent agenda and then be taken up under our lottery system as an individual article. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 1, Election of Officers, as printed in the warrant. Approve Article 2, Recurring Business, as printed in the warrant. Approve Article 4, FY25 Revolving Funds, as printed in the warrant. Approve Article Number 11, Tremont Nail Remediation Project, as printed in the warrant. Approve Article 12, FY2025 Community Preservation Fund Reserves, as printed in the warrant. And further, pass over Article 6, FY25 Capital Plan, and pass over Article 14, John V. Dixon Recycling Center.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the consent agenda. Let me just go through each of these articles. The Election of Officers, as printed in the warrant. I see no one standing. Article 2, Recurring Business, as printed in the warrant. I see no one standing. Article 4, FY25 Revolving Funds, as printed in the warrant. I see no one standing. Article 11, Tremont Nail Remediation Project, as printed in the warrant. I see no one standing. Article 12, FY2025 Community Preservation Fund Reserves, as printed in the warrant. I see no one standing. On the articles to pass over, Article Number 6, FY25 Capital Plan. I don't see anyone standing. And Article 14, the John V. Dixon Recycling Center. Seeing no one standing to be heard, I will go to a vote on the motion with regard to the consent agenda, as it, as it's been read and appears on the screen. All those in favor of the motion under the consent agenda, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? It passes unanimously on a voice vote. We'll now go to, we'll now go to-
Madam Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may ask if we could take the Upper Cape out of order? Because I see the time is 7:26, and we'll be going into the special town meeting in four minutes, and rather than making our guest sit through all of our special town meeting, then maybe we could get that one addressed now?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize, is the superintendent for Upper Cape present? Thank you, yes, that certainly makes sense. I know you have a lot of other town meetings you also have to go to. So, move to, is there a motion to advance the Upper Cape article?
So moved.
A second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Make a motion on Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of the money as its share of the operating and capital cost of Upper Cape County Regional Technical High School for the fiscal year July 1, '24 through June 30, '25, or to do or to act in any manner relative thereto.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded on Article 9? If the moving party withdraws motion to state, "I move the town vote to raise and appropriate," I think you might have included "transfer" in that, and it's just a straight "raise and appropriate" article.
Fine. If you would please remove the word "transfer" out of my motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Camerano. You have the floor.
Madam Moderator, Select Board members, FINCOM Committee, thank you so, so much for the time that you have allotted me this evening, as well as in the past, to listen and review our budget very, very carefully. Upper Cape Tech appreciates all of the support from the town of Wareham, all of the residents, the families. We have an additional 25 students, so we have 263 students from the town of Wareham this year. We appreciate everything that the town does. And for Select Board Member, Mr. Slavin, I'm wearing the bow tie, and congratulations, and we wish you the best going forward, and we appreciate all of your support in the past. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything further to be said on Article 9? Seeing no one standing to speak, we'll go to a vote on Article 9. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously on a voice vote.
Thank you again.
I have 7:29, so we'll wait, we'll wait till 7:30, and then we'll start the special town Yes, is there a point of order?
I don't believe that Article 3 has been addressed. It's not there in the general ruling.
I actually can't hear you.
I don't believe Article 3 has been addressed in the regular meeting before we go to the special town meeting. It wasn't made in part of the articles that were included in the first purpose.
Which one was Article 3? So it actually is 7:30, I'm required to actually start the special town meeting. When we come, when, after we've concluded the special town meeting, we'll return to the business of the annual town meeting. So we will get to all the articles under the special and then the annual. All right, I note the hour is 7:30, so I will call the special town meeting to order. As appears from the return of service on the warrant by the constable and as confirmed by the town clerk, the warrant was duly posted and served. Again, we have a zero quorum. I note the presence of a quorum. The ground rules and the other matters that I raised in the annual town meeting just a few minutes ago would also stand here. There is also a consent agenda, I believe, for the special town meeting as well. Is there a motion on the consent agenda for the special town meeting?
Yes, Madam Moderator. I move that the town approve Article S2, Fund Parking Program, by transferring $68,600 from the receipts reserved for appropriation onset peer account. Approve Article S6, Peg Access Receipts to Wareham Community TV by transferring the sum of $325,066.26 from the Peg Access Receipts reserved for appropriation account to WCTV. Approve Article S9, Harbor Service Permit Receipts, as printed in the warrant. Approve Article S13, Transfer of McKinney-Vento Funds to Transportation Revolving Account, as printed in the warrant. And further, pass over Article S1, Budget Transfers, and pass over Article S5, Prior Year Bills.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on the consent agenda. Again, let me just go through each article. There's also an explanation for all of these in the, the Finance Committee explanation in the warrant that you have in front of you. Article S2, Fund Parking Program. I see no one standing. Article S6, Peg Access Receipts to Wareham Community TV. I see no one standing. Article S9, Harbor Service Permit Receipts, as printed in the warrant. I see no one standing. Approve Article S13, Transfer McKinney-Vento Funds. I see no one standing. Pass over Article S1, Budget Transfers. I see no one standing. Pass over Article S5, Prior Year Bills. I see no one standing. Is there anything further to be said on the motion on the consent agenda in the special town meeting? Seeing no one rise to speak, we'll go to a vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor in the motion as stated on the, on the screen, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously by a voice, voice vote. So we now will go to, we have a lottery system for the order of the next articles in the special town meeting. It also applies to the annual town meeting. It also applies to the annual town meeting, so I will have our town clerk. Is there a motion on Article S Three?
S Three. I move that the town transfer $5,670,000 from certified free cash to pay all costs incidental and related thereto. Wareham Public Schools, three buses and two vans, $500,000. Wareham Public Schools, Middle School roof phase two, $1 million. Wareham Police Department, Records Management, Software, Radio and Telephone, $65,000. Wareham Free Library, Library HVAC, $2,300,000. Municipal Maintenance Department, purchase and equip two six-wheel and one ten-wheel truck, $1,110,000. Municipal Maintenance Department, Speed Aware Radar Signs, $100,000. Municipal Maintenance Department, MS Four Catch Base and Repair, Maintenance and Disposal, $100,000. Municipal Maintenance Department, Three Electric Vehicles, $120,000. EMS Ambulance, $375,000.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded on Article S Three. May I have the vote and the recommendation of the Select Board?
Madam Moderator, it's a point of order.
Yes.
I believe the person reading the article misstated the item related to the middle school. He said phase two. The board says phase one.
Did he say phase one?
So I will correct. Phase one.
Thank you. So we're voting on phase one.
We're voting on phase one. Thank you. May I have the vote and the recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted favorable eight zero zero.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S Three? Seeing no one standing, we'll go to a vote on Article S Three. All those... Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Ekstrom.
Thank you, Brenda Ekstrom. Please, too. Just two quick questions. Number one, how much do we have in our free cash?
And I will direct that to the town administrator.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe they had it in the Finance Committee report, but I will pull it up. It was a little over $7 million. So just so, at the end of the night, if we vote this article, the $5,670,000, and then the $850,000, we will have, I believe it's $1,025,000 available.
Thank you. And the second question is, the previous speaker brought up phase one or phase two. Are there only two phases, or do we know how many phases there will be on that? And will they all cost about the same? I know we have to do it. I'm just jealous.
Yeah, so this is actually, phase one and two have already been approved. Phase one, we approved for borrowing, but when the number came in lower than the 1.5 million to 1 million, we have the ability to pay for it, and rather than going out and bonding it and paying the interest, and thought is to pay for that now. So you will see at another town meeting, probably in the October, to rescind the borrowing authorization. We just wanted to make sure this got approved first. The phase two is the rest of the middle school roof, which was eligible for a portion of the MSBA reimbursement. This section was not due to its age, and this is... We actually have some good news for you. The bids came back in at three and a half million rather than closer to the six to seven million mark, so...
Super, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article S Three? Seeing no one else standing who wishes to be heard, we'll go to a vote on Article S Three, and this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by stating "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating "nay." It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Is there a motion on Article S Fifteen?
There is. Motion to authorize the Select Board to petition the legislature for special legislation that amends the Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 5-3, as shown in the document, unfiling the office of the town clerk, to propose charter change by changing the date from January 25th to February 28th to read as follows.
Motion.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to petition legislature for special legislation that amends the Wareham Home Rule Town Charter as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second on Article S Fifteen. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action eight zero zero.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S Fifteen? Yes, gentlemen, to my left.
Don Johnson.
I think you may have to, maybe it's just me, may have to get a little closer to the microphone.
Don Johnson, State Department of Health. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, sir. Thank you.
I'm a little confused. I know the charter was voted on, and then it went to the legislature, and then it is back here to be approved by the voters. And what I see in the warrant is just a change in dates. I don't see the changes of the charter. And I refer to Wareham Week, Thursday, April 11th, and then in there it said, "One change, made the town clerk an appointed position," which we had a lot of debate over that in the past. It said, "Another made it so that the four votes from the Select Board are required to remove the town administrator rather than three." And the third provides for a regular review of the charter. My question is to the second listing, and it has no reflection on the performance of Derek Sullivan. I think he's doing a great job. But the idea that the voters now will approve four selectmen rather than three to approve the position, or to remove someone from the position?
Point of order.
Yep.
If I... I think we can get your question answered, but I didn't want to cut you off either.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
I can explain that.
Can that be amended at this time?
I think there perhaps will be an explanation that might answer, address your concerns without having to amend.
The question about the four Select Board members to remove the town administrator, in the previously authorized version of the charter, it required a percentage, and the percentage came out to be 3.25, so... Or 3.75. So that's what that one is about, Mr. Johnson.
Don, if you don't... And I'm sorry. Don, that has already passed town meeting, and that's going to the general ballot on the election. That's not in what's in front of you tonight. What they're asking for is changing the dates for when the budget submitted for town meeting. So if you don't like that one, that would be voting on the ballot, you'd vote against the charter, charter change.
So this will be on the ballot for the election?
Yeah, not this, what you're voting on tonight.
Okay.
But what you were just discussing from the Wareham Week article.
Okay. As I said, this is no reflection on your performance. This is just a general thought process that it's... That the voters should have a good say, and the selectmen should follow what they believe on that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article S Fifteen? Seeing no one standing to be heard, we'll go to a vote on Article S Fifteen. And it calls for a majority vote. All those in favor of Article S Fifteen, please signify by stating "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating "nay." I declare that it's passed by a majority on a voice vote. The next article is Article S Seventeen. Is there a motion on Article S Seventeen?
I move... I move that the town vote to amend the Wareham Wetlands Protection Bylaw, Division Five, Article One, Section Fourteen, Regulations Which Were Adopted by the Town of Wareham During the April 26, 2004 Special Spring Town Meeting, by deleting the following language in Paragraph One. These regulations shall be limited to administrative matters, including but not limited to procedures governing the amount and filing of fees and the submittal requirements of that application.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded on Article S Seventeen. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended eight zero zero.
I understand that the... From the Chair of the Conservation Commission, that you wish to ask the privilege of the floor for the consultant with regard to the wetland protective bylaws. Is that correct?
The consultant wasn't able to make it, but we've got Josh here.
Yes, that's correct. And unfortunately, our consultant could not make it this evening, so I'll be speaking in her place.
All right.
So the explanation for the revision to the bylaw, the Wareham Conservation Commission reviewed the current Wareham Wetlands Protective Bylaw, recorded in Division Six, Article One of the bylaws of the protection laws and regulations consented with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, in relevant need of the community. The Wareham Wetlands Protective Bylaw was first adopted in April 26, 2004, and the last amendment to this was adopted April 25, 2016 by town administration. Since that time, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection promulgated new rules and regulations in the Code of Massachusetts Regulations for the administration of the Wetlands Protection Act, once in 2014, and the DEP aims to promulgate new rules and regulations again in 2024. This new set of regulations will present significant change to the administration of the Wetlands Protection Act and create challenges to the administration of the Wareham Wetlands Protection Bylaw. The Wareham Conservation Commission believes that the leading language presented above will enable the commission to respond more effectively to regulatory updates and bring the bylaw into line with the new Commonwealth Regulations as are revised and promulgated. This will help prevent future appeals and undue burden on applicants and the town by streamlining the review of the commission pursuant both to the Act and the bylaw.
Are you all set?
Yes. Unless you want me to actually read what is being changed from the current bylaw.
I think it's in the warrant, actually.
It is located in the warrant.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, to my left, you have the floor.
Carl Schultz, I rise on a point of order. The article as read into the record and as printed on the screen is missing the clause and does not match what's printed in the Finance Committee report. It's missing the last phrase, "or to take any action relative thereto."
Okay, so I should have perhaps said this at the beginning. So the articles are... Set the scope of what's going to be before the town meeting, and that's why almost all of them will say, "and to take any other action thereto." However, the motion has to be a particular thing, not, "we move such and such and any action thereto," which is a nothing, basically. So that's why it doesn't exactly track what's in the...
Can I object? If we're going to have different things being said, being printed, I don't know what we're going on.
I'm going to defer to Town Council.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Three to the previous speaker. One of the rules of the moderator at town meeting is to determine whether any particular motion is within the scope of an article. Sometimes the article forms the full basis for the motion. For example, "I move as printed in the warrant," one of my favorite motions, nice and quick, not a lot of reading. However, there are more technical articles, such as the one that's in front of you. In this particular article, it's seeking to change and delete certain language that's within the wetland bylaw. If, between the time that the warrant was printed and today, the Conservation Commission had perhaps found a flaw, perhaps thought better of a word that was being used, needed to make some editorial improvement, they would like to have the opportunity to do so in order to prevent the best possible motion to this meeting. If we took a purely literal approach to every article, which I believe is what you're suggesting should be done, that would prohibit the moderator from allowing motions that vary somewhat from what is printed in the warrant. The purpose of the words, or "take any other action relative thereto," is to afford the moderator the discretion to allow those changes, which, within her view, are within the scope of the article. There will always be differences of opinion as to whether something is within the scope of the article, but at the end of the day, only one opinion counts, under Chapter Thirty-Nine, Section Fifteen. That is the opinion of the moderator, who is duly elected to make determinations as to whether any particular motion is within the scope of an article. Madam Moderator takes advantage of that enabling language. In this case, it wasn't necessary, since the motion exactly recited what the intent to change was, and therefore, the inclusion of the words, "or take any other action relative thereto," would be considered superfluous to the action that's put before the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Bowen.
Just a clarification. Thank you. Explanation. So if what's read doesn't match what's printed, is it only, your point, those words that don't matter, or if there's other things that are given? Why are we exactly voting?
Well, okay, you have two questions. So what we're exactly voting on is what the motion is, all right? So if a motion, and that's not the case here, but if you have a motion that's so far outside of what the scope of the article is, and the purpose of the warrant is to give fair notice to the voters as to what might come up, if it's so far outside of the scope of the article... For instance, if someone came up here and said, "Oh, you know, I move that we do away with the wetlands bylaws," all right, that's not permitted. But in this case, we're totally within the scope of the article, so I'm going to permit the motion to go forward.
No, I'm just trying to understand. So we're voting...
You're voting on this.
...that, and if in subsequent ones, whatever's put up on the screen, that's what we're voting?
Correct.
Right.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article S Seventeen? Seeing no one outstanding, we'll go to a vote on Article S Seventeen. All those in favor, please signify by stating "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating "nay." It passes unanimously by a voice vote. Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously by a voice vote. Article S-12.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $400,000 from Wareham Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Fund retained earnings for the purchase of two aeration blowers, one one-ton pickup truck with a crane, one three-quarter ton pickup truck with a crane, and one three-quarter pickup truck.
Second. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded on Article S-12. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 300.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted favorable vote 701.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S-12?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just anticipating a question. Retained earnings are the free cash, if you will, of the Water Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Fund, and those are certified at $5,158,069.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Is there anything further to be said on Article S-12? Seeing no one else standing that wishes to be heard, we'll go to a vote on Article S-12, which is a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Article S-11. Is there a motion on Article S-11?
Madam Moderator, I moved that the town will vote to transfer $20.76 to the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund account from the Dog Park Fall of 2017 Town Meeting, Article Number 27, and to transfer $8,465.86 to the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund account from the Weeby Antic Ridge Spring 2012 Town Meeting, Article Number 41. $4,475, the Swift Beach Engineering Fall 2015 Town Meeting, Article Number 23. $889.76 from the Mobility Math Special Spring Town Meeting, 2022, Article Number 7, for a total of $3 million. I'm sorry. Article Number 7, I'm sorry. Town Meeting, Article Number 7, $3,101.10.
Second. Motion made and seconded on Article S-11. May I have the vote of, Mr. Town Administrator, did you wish to give an explanation?
Just clarifying, the last one was $3,101.10.
That is correct.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended 800.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S-11? Yes, Mrs. Exstrom.
Sorry. I just want to, parentheses, I just, for parentheses sake, I know that in bookkeeping and stuff, a lot of times parentheses are because it's a negative number. So this is just, they didn't put the parentheses through all the numbers. Is that correct?
Is there someone that.
So it's about $20,000 altogether? Is that what I'm?
So those are not negative numbers. Yeah, they are not negative numbers.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S-11? Seeing no one else standing to be heard, I will call for a vote on Article S-11, which is a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Article S-4. Is there a motion on Article S-4?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer $850,000 from certified free cash to be used for stabilization fund, $150,000, OPEB Trust Fund, $300,000, Benefits Reserve, $100,000, Unemployment Reserve, $300,000.
Second. Motion made and seconded on Article S-4. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Is there anything further to be said on Article S-4?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The stabilization fund with transferring $150,000 to it, that would bring the account up to $4,999,281.39. We currently have that invested where it's at a 4.85% return. You can't invest the stabilization fund in equities. It has to be something that is, is no risk and guaranteed. Typically, you're, you want to have at least 5% of your budget. This would bring us, this is over that, so, but what we're seeing now is they're starting to move into the 7% to 10% range, but this is a good thing. The stabilization fund is our rainy day fund. Also, with some of the changes, you are allowed to borrow against that, so you don't have to go out for bands and pay for the expenses and costs. So this is, it's really nice fund. It's also what's helped us have our highest bond rating in history, which is double A+. The OPEB Trust Fund, OPEB is our other post-employment benefits, so that's the retiree liabilities such as healthcare and some of the small, small insurances. So this would bring us up to $3,280,151. Our OPEB liability, with the way the actuarial is, if they, you have to be able to essentially fund all your liabilities today over the next, you know, 50 years, if you will. So believe it or not, that liability is about $115 million. So the $3 million is nice, you know, your goal is to keep on moving up to where the, where they'll give you the actuarial that you're, you're basically essentially fully funded, not at the $115 million. Finance Committee, we were asked a question, it's, you know, are you ever going to get there, but the, you know, what's, somebody else talked about, when's the best time to plant a tree? Well, it was 20 years ago. The next best time is today. So that's what we're doing with the OPEB liability. The Benefits Reserve, there's currently $101,000 in that, and they'll bring it up to a little bit over $201,000, and that's what helps when somebody retires. It used to be with the budgets, you would have to wait if they had sicker vacation time to buy out. You'd have to wait, you know, four weeks before you could fill the position, because you paid for it out of the budget. This allows you to fill a position ahead of time if you can find employees in today's, today's labor market. So, and then the next one is the Unemployment Reserve, and that would bring it up to roughly $505,000. We, we're self-insured with, with unemployment, and, you know, this year, I think we'll pay out about $120,000. So you, every, every time it starts dipping down a little bit lower, you want to have that nice buffer. So, and that's the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Is there anything further to be said on Article S-4? Seeing no one standing waiting to be heard, we'll go to a vote on Article S-4, which is a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Pardon me. Article S-8. Is there a motion on Article S-8?
Madam Moderator, I move to further study Article S-8.
Second. Motion made and seconded to further study Article S-8. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends further study 400.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends further study 800.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S-8?
Yeah, so, Madam Moderator, the, that was voted change earlier, and these have been sent out before that was, so it reads the original motion on the board. So I don't know if we, are you okay with the word, or do you want to have?
I should have paid a little more attention to that. I apologize. The motion itself was for further study, and there was a second on that, so.
Matt, would you be able to?
Actually, Madam Moderator?
Wait, wait, wait. Let's, let's straighten out here, and then I'll, I'll take your point.
So the motion that was read was to further study the.
So the motion that was read and was seconded was a motion to further study this article regarding the duty of the town clerk.
Matt, do you have the ability to type that? Thank you.
And through the miracle of modern PowerPoint, Mr. Underhill can change that so that we can all read it. Thank you. This article, further study this article. Okay, so the motion is, as appears and is stated and appears, oops, on the PowerPoint, a motion to further study this article, which has been seconded. Is there anything further to be said on the motion on this article? Yes, Mrs. Exstrom.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to table this article and take it up when we address S-14, because I would like to address them both together.
My.
That one's going to be to further study as well.
Yeah. My understanding with regard to Article S-14 is that the motion on Article S-14 will be also to further study Article S-14. Does that?
A motion to table is not debatable.
I'm just trying, no, no, I understand what you're saying, but I think that in light of your motion in which you reference Article S-14, just by way of information for yourself and for the body, my understanding is that the motion on Article S-14 is also going to be a motion to further study.
Which is fine, but my, my reason for this, then, I would like to make an amendment. Rather than further study, I would like to make an amendment for indefinite postponement. There's a motion and a second, but you can amend.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry. Mr. Turtlebaum behind me is telling me what can and can't be done. So that is why I'm responding that way to Madam Moderator.
So if you could, if you could, we're going to be to you. Hang on one second. No, no, it's an amendment. I mean, from.
No, actually, you know what?
What?
A motion to table is a privileged motion. Proceeds. Motion is on the floor. Let her make a motion to table.
Second.
The people can decide whether they want to table this article or put the other one together.
If that's what she still wants to do.
Okay.
She wanted to.
All right. So let me go back to your original point, Mrs. Exstrom, which I believe was a motion to table, which you correctly point out is not, it's a privileged motion, it's not debatable. And then, at the point where we get to Article S-14, depending on what the body wishes to do, it could be taken up then. So we have a motion on the floor to table Article S-8. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
A vote, a yes vote, a motion to table would be to defer discussion of this until the other article comes up. A no vote would be to vote on the motion to refer it further study right now.
Right, right. So just so folks are clear, a vote, a yes vote to table Article S-8 until Article S-14 comes up, that would be what a yes vote is. A no vote would, would be to proceed to the motion as originally stated, which was a motion for further study. So, no debate, no, no debate. And so we're going to go to a vote on the motion.
Can I just ask a question, clarification? That's what I want.
Yes, go ahead. But there's not going to be any, she's correct, there's no debate on this.
I want to know.
Or discussion.
I'm not discuss, I'm trying, are we tabling that motion, or are we tabling what's printed in the law?
So, we're, go, go ahead. I'm going to defer to Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So you have two motions on the floor. The main motion is to refer Article S-8 for further study. It's been seconded. Ms. Exstrom has made a motion to table action on this motion until such time as Article S-14, I believe it is, comes up for discussion, the purpose of which would be to take up a discussion of both Articles S-8 and S-14 together. Motion to table is a privileged motion. The, it's not debatable. It's up to the meeting to decide whether it wants to vote to table this discussion until S-14 comes up, in which case you would vote yes on Ms. Exstrom's motion. If the meeting wishes to proceed to the vote on the main motion that's on the floor under S-8, you would vote no on Ms. Exstrom's motion, and that main motion would return to be the primary business of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Bowen. So.
Point of order, Madam Moderator. Shouldn't this be couched as an amendment to the motion that's deployed right now, rather than as an additional motion?
No, it's a, it's a motion to, it's not an amendment, it's a motion to table.
Fair enough. Thank you.
So let us go to a vote on the motion to table Article S-8 until such time as Article S-14 comes before the body. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by stating nay.
Nay.
The nays have it on a voice vote. We will now proceed to the main motion, which is a motion to further study this article. Is there anything further to be said on the main motion? Yes, Mr. Schultz?
Yes, just again, to clarify, if we move to further study, that means the clerk's duties as today don't change.
That is correct.
So, no change.
That is correct. Is there anything further to be said on the main motion, the motion for further study? Yes, Mrs. Exstrom.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I have something that I wanted to say to both articles, but I have a two-minute speech that I will be saying to both. So thank you, everyone. I hope you enjoy it. The Charter Review Committee that was constituted in 2019 amended the charter in Article 8, Section 8-4, to require that every charter amendment was approved at town, that was approved at town meeting and sent to the state for approval, whether through the legislature and signed by the governor, was sent to the Attorney General. The amendment would then have to come back to the town residents and go on the ballot for approval. If approved, then the newly amended charter calls for the selectmen to appoint a bylaw review. review committee to make sure there are no bylaws that conflict with the changes that were made in the charter. The town has not yet voted on the charter changes, that will not happen until this coming election. So this bylaw review committee, which was composed under the requirements of the not yet approved charter, at both the select board meeting and at the bylaw review committee's initial meeting, was erroneously established and improperly constituted. Even if you want to ignore the law and redefine the purpose of what this bylaw review committee was to do, the Board of Selectmen voted to have five members on the committee. At no time did this committee have more than two members on it. That means the committee never had a quorum. Without a quorum, no business of a committee can occur. It doesn't matter how many guests, friends, or participants you have at the meetings. If you do not have enough members to conduct business, no business can occur. Once the town has an election and if the town.
You have twenty seconds.
I understand. Once the town has our, our election and if the town voters vote for the charter changes that were made during COVID in 2020, you'll have to find them. And then the Board of Selectmen should elect a full committee and have them abide by the charter.
Your, your, your time, your time is up.
And review the bylaws.
Mrs. Ekstrom, your time is up, thank you.
I'm done, I told you it was two minutes.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S eight? Yes, Mr. Titlebaum.
Yes, as the former selectman who was pretty much responsible for making sure the warrants met requirements for ten years, I think all we have to do is look at the language that says inserted by the select board. It doesn't matter who else might have been involved in it, doesn't matter who went knocking on their doors, under general laws thirty-nine, Section ten, the selectmen can put things on the warrant.
Is there anything, is there anything further to be said on Article S eight? Seeing no one else standing, we will go to a vote on Article S eight, which is a motion to further study this article.
It's majority, right?
Yes.
Majority vote, so all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously by a voice vote. All right, so all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes by a majority voice vote. Article S ten. Is there a motion on Article S ten?
Madam Moderator, I moved at the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Act unallocated funds under the category of historic preservation, the sum of seventy-six thousand dollars for debt principal debt payment and the sum of nineteen thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents for short-term interest on the bond approved at the 2018 Fall Town Meeting, Article eleven, for the cleanup of contamination at the Tremont Nail Factory site.
Second. Motion made and seconded on Article S ten, is there anything further to be said on Article S ten? Actually, there was a gentleman behind you that I think stood up first.
Yeah, and.
That, that's okay.
Madam Moderator, this was the, because this is the special, this is a this year fiscal year action, the one you voted on the annuals for next fiscal year.
Thank, thank you, I know it's confusing because of the order in which these have come up. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jimenez Precinct, for more of an explanation on the short-term interest of nineteen thousand dollars. What's the outstanding note on the Tremont Nail remediation? And how long will be carrying the short-term note? It just seems like an excessive amount, I don't know what the cleanup was, but if you could answer those questions, it's informational, I don't think it really affect the outcome, but I'd appreciate that, thank you.
I think I see the treasures stepping up to answer your question, thank you.
John Foster, treasure collector. This ban is a seventy-six thousand dollar payoff and nineteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand nine thirty-seven sixty-two in short-term interest. It's to be paid in fiscal twenty-four. The amount you already voted for, I believe, on the consent agenda for fiscal twenty-five is to pay off the taxable ban for Tremont Nail. There is a tax-exempt bond that was issued that will also be paid off in fiscal year twenty-five, so the whole project will be paid off in twenty-five.
Thank you, is there anything further to be said on Article S ten? Seeing no, no one else standing, we will go to a vote which calls for a majority. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Could I have the report and recommendation of the select board?
Selectmen recommend favorable action four zero zero.
Could I have the report and recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee voted to recommend eight zero zero.
Seeing no one else standing to be heard, we'll go to vote on Article S ten. All those in favor of the motion under Article S ten, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Article S fourteen. Is there a motion on Article S fourteen?
Madam Moderator, I move to refer Article S fourteen for further study.
Second. So I think we have the same issue on this one, if it's possible, Mr. Underhill, to have the PowerPoint reflect the motion as it was stated. Okay, so there's been a motion for further study made and seconded on Article S fourteen, may I have the vote and recommendation of the select board?
Select board recommends further study four zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee favors further study eight zero zero.
Is there anything further to be said on the motion on Article S fourteen?
I'm just going to ask another clarifying question. I'm just trying to understand the process.
So, Mr. Schultz, you have the floor.
You okay? Yes, so again, process question, and, and I know Mr. Bowen tried to answer this from the court. My question still goes back to what was printed in the warrant article. Is this in fact an amendment to that article? And should it be voted on as an amendment? Because.
No.
So that's what I'm asking, so it's not an amendment?
No. So here's, let, let me take a stab at this and then Attorney Bowen can, can fill it.
I'm just trying to understand.
No, no, I, I appreciate that, so the article is what is noticed to all the voters as to what's going to be acted on. The thing that's actually acted on here at this town meeting is the motion. So this is the main motion. Anything that happens after the main motion is an amendment. Just because the motion is not exactly what's in the article doesn't necessarily make an amendment. Yes, Mrs. Ekstrom.
Thank you, here we go, two minutes. The Charter Review Committee that was constituted in 2019 amended the charter in Article eight, Section eight four, to require that after every charter amendment was approved at town meeting and sent to the state for approval, whether through the legislature and signed by the governor or sent to the Attorney General, the amendment would have to come back to the town residents and go on the ballot for approval. If approved, then the newly amended charter calls for the Board of Selectmen to appoint a bylaw review committee to make sure there are no bylaws that conflict with the changes that were made in the charter. The town has not yet voted on the charter changes and that will not happen until this coming election in May. So this by, bylaw review committee, which was composed under the requirements of the not yet approved charter, at both the select board meeting and the bylaw review committee's initial meeting, was erroneously established and improperly constituted. Even if you wanted to ignore the law and redefine the purpose of what this bylaw committee, review committee was to do, the select board voted to have five members on it, at no time did this committee have more than two members on it. That means the committee never had a quorum. Without a quorum, no business of a committee can occur. It doesn't matter how many guests, friends, or participants you have at a meeting, if you do not have enough members to conduct business, no business can occur. Once the town has an election and if the town voters vote for the charter changes, then the select board should elect a full committee and have them abide by the charter and they can review the town's bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you, is there anything further to be said on the motion under Article S fourteen? Seeing no one else standing to be, to be heard, we'll go to a vote on Article S fourteen for further study, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion for further study, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously with a voice vote. Article S eighteen.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from overlay surplus the sum of a hundred and forty thousand to complete the state mandated reevaluation of all real estate and personal property in town.
Second. Motion made and seconded on Article S eighteen, may I have the vote and recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, select board, I apologize.
Okay, I did it too. Select board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends favorable action eight zero zero.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S eighteen?
The Commonwealth, um.
Uh, yeah, you have to state your name, you have to wait to be given the floor. Yes, ma'am.
Jackie Nichols, Director of Assessing.
Go ahead.
And Precinct four, I think. For Article S eighteen, state mandated real estate and personal property revaluation, this is a five-year cycle, state mandated, requires a full revaluation and certification of value of all real estate and personal property located in the town every five years. This revaluation will be effective for fiscal year 2025. The amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars has been released from overlay to fund this article, there is no impact on the current budget.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S eighteen? Mrs. Ekstrom.
Will this be including commercial and industrial real estate as well? Because I've noticed the majority of that hasn't been done in at least four years, while all of the residential houses have gone skyrocketing.
If there's anyone that may address the question, please.
Jackie Nichols, Director of Assessing. The revaluation will encompass all of the property in Wareham, including personal property and all real property.
Thank you.
All real property includes that.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S eighteen? Seeing no one else standing, we'll go to a vote on Article S eighteen, requires a majority vote, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously with a voice vote. Article S sixteen.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Division one, Article four, Section five of the town bylaws as printed in the warrant.
Second. Motion made and seconded on Article sixteen, is there anything further to be said on Article S sixteen? Seeing no one standing waiting to be heard, we'll go to a vote on Article. Oh, I'm sorry. May I have the vote and recommendation of the select board?
Select board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends favorable action eight zero zero.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S sixteen? Seeing no one standing waiting to be heard, we'll go to a vote on Article S sixteen, calls for a majority vote, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes by a majority voice vote. Article S seven. Is there a motion on Article S seven?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town approve and fund the collective bargaining agreements between the town of Wareham and A, Wareham Public Employees Union twelve forty-nine of the Laborers International Union of North America, Wareham Wastewater Treatment Plant Operators, and B, Wareham Public Employees Union twelve forty-nine of the Laborers International Union of North America, four persons union.
Second. Motion made and seconded on Article S seven, is there anything further to be said on this article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, this is the first article item I'm talking about is the Laborers District Council Wastewater Treatment Plant Operators. Those are the laborers for the, for the water pollution control or sewer facility. Going through it, this is a three-year contract, previously we had done a two-year contract with them. We actually were not certain whether we were going to try and keep this under, if you will, with the, with the town or privatize the operation. Over the last year, we've seen a big change and a lot of good has been happening at the plant that, that started a little bit ago, so working with the employees, we think it's important to keep them on and continue with a three-year contract. This also, what we're doing is creating the employee evaluation period, which is originally three months, that can be extended for additional three months. So as you may recognize, it's basically a twenty-four-seven operation, definitely seven days a week. We're changing, we're typically, if somebody works on Sunday, they get double time. If they work on their second consecutive day off, they would have gotten double time as well, and you want to make sure you clarify that, that they wouldn't, if their first day off is Sunday and their second day off would be Monday, they're not getting double time, double time, so clarified that. Also making sure that when they're coming in for holidays, that it's the, it's at least a four-hour period. We've also added an evaluation period. Most of the unions, we've been bringing this in, it allows you to evaluate them and it's also how you can either do promotional or actually they can get a step through the evaluation period. It's right, we'd make it so that the step is not automatic, so it creates a merit practice. Compensation, so this is a, this is a bit of a difficult one, so I'm going to try and go through it. They were behind the ball in pay, so we were already upgrading them two dollars an hour. What we're doing is memorializing that and we've essentially created a new contract for them, a wage scale, where beforehand, the step one labor was getting eighteen dollars, fourteen cents, and then some change, they're now getting twenty-one dollars. So we've already been paying them the two dollars more we've incorporated. So, we've already been paying them the two dollars more, we've incorporated that to bring it up to the twenty-one dollars total. That, we've also, so two things. One, this is not, this is a difficult job. They're dealing with human waste. It's, it's hard to attract, so by doing this, we bring it up to twenty-one dollars. We started bringing them up to the area of where we're seeing some similar communities. Born, um, at twenty-one dollars, for example, they're a little bit higher than municipal maintenance laborers, but they're three cents cheaper than custodians. So, it's bringing them up, they deserve to be brought up. We've also created a skilled laborer position. In the past, in order to get upgraded to the next level, you had to take the exam to be a grade-three operator. We have people at the plant that can take apart machines and put them back together blindfolded, but they're not going to pass an exam, or they don't want to. That they're good employees, and they should be rewarded for their talents, and basing it on just the exam doesn't make sense, because we don't need that license. We need people that can work on the machines and fix our stuff. So, we've created a skilled laborer position that's at twenty-three dollars an hour. And believe it or not, we've brought, we now have the truck driver and the operator five at twenty-five dollars an hour. We have people coming in for interviews, they're telling us they're getting, for CDL truck drivers, they're getting forty-five dollars an hour. So, it, it's tough, but these are the increases. So, this is a three-year contract into, we also adjusted the steps, so they are two-and-a-half percent in between. Then in, after this, year two of the contract, there's a two percent increase. Year three of the contract, there's a two percent increase. There's currently eight people in this. So, when I was trying to calculate the cost and to explain it, I'm going to give you the lump sum that already hit, that includes the two dollars. Now, mind you, we've already been paying them that, but we're just trying to give you the full information on it. And that would be, the costless contract would be approximately forty-five thousand dollars. The next contract is the water plu, is the, um, excuse me, the four persons. The four persons are in the Water Pollution Control Facility, and they're in our municipal maintenance. There's currently four of them. There used to be, just to give you an example of it, there used to be four in municipal maintenance alone, but now there's four spread between the two. So, with the, we made sure that the hours of work, it used to say that they were a Monday-through-Friday operation for the, uh, four persons. And to give you an idea of a four person is a, uh, it's almost, it's, it's like a working manager, if you will, like a crew chief. So, they're sent out, they can lead a crew, uh, and it's, it's an important working position. So, we've explained the hours of work now going forward for them are, it's not just a Monday-through-Friday operation, especially because they're in the Water Pollution Control Facility. And there was not too much language change. Uh, we also gave them the FSLA language that all the other, uh, unions have, which was just going back for years. For some reason, they didn't get it, and that's Fair Labor Standards Act. And frankly, that's, if everybody else has it, it should be in their contract as well. So, with the compensation, this was, just across the board, you increased their hourly rate by two dollars and fifty cents in year one, then a dollar in year two, and then a dollar in year three. And then also, the, uh, we provided a longevity of somebody that's worked for greater than twenty-five years of fifteen hundred dollars. So, all told, when I was looking at this one, I'd calculated it out to have a, an impact of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S seven? Yes, Mrs. Ekstrom.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, and I, I'm not blindsiding the town administrator with this, I did speak to him earlier about this, but, um, just for, um, public information, um, I would appreciate, and I know others would, if, when, um, a contract comes up, if in the future, if you can stamp draft all over it, but maybe put it on the town meeting website so that we, because I appreciate what you just did there, but that we could actually look at it on the website so we could see what the contract is before we vote on it. I'm all for the wastewater laborers getting more money. When I looked at, because, um, I, uh, did a public records request and got all of the, um, contracts, and when I found out that the wastewater union members were making eight dollars less an hour than, I won't say what department, but a department that works indoors at desks that didn't need any qualifications, uh, I don't mean to say negatively, but I was really surprised with the work that they have to do. So, I'm very happy to hear that they're getting, you know, you're lifting it up to try to be more competitive. Um, but just maybe in the future, if you could do that with it, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article S seven? Seeing no one else standing to be heard, we'll go to a vote on Article S seven, requires a majority vote. I keep forgetting that. I, I, I apologize. Uh, may I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action three zero one.
And may I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action eight zero zero.
Thank you. Um, seeing no one else standing to be heard, we'll go to a vote on Article S seven. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Um, we've covered all the articles in the special town meeting. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting, and then we will proceed with the annual town meeting.
I move to dissolve the special town meeting.
Motion made and seconded to dissolve the special town meeting. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously, and we will go now to where we left off at the annual town meeting. Article twelve. Is there a motion on Article twelve?
That was on the consent agenda?
Was it? Oh, you're right, you're right. Article thirteen. Is there a motion on Article thirteen?
Madam Moderator, to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaws to remove the limit of the number of marijuana retailers within the Town of Wareham.
Is there a second on Article thirteen?
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article thirteen. Uh, this is a zoning bylaw, so before we proceed, um, I will ask for the, uh, report and the vote of the Planning Board.
Good evening, Joshua Farady for the Planning Board. Uh, in case you haven't heard it enough, I would like to take Allen Slaven one more time. He was a member of the Planning Board as well, so. A duly-done public hearing was held Monday, April fifteenth at six P M. The Planning Board unanimously voted five zero zero to recommend against the approval of Article thirteen, which proposed the remove the limit of three licensed marijuana retailers. The Board had the following reasons for the recommendation. The proposal submitted to the town meeting was not formatted correctly, did not contain the necessary information regarded to make changes to the zoning bylaw. The proposal did not identify where it would impact the current bylaws. Zoning bylaws are regulated, currently regulate marijuana distribution in retail facilities, not the general bylaws. The town previously voted in favor of allowing marijuana facilities. The requirement for minimum number, number of marijuana retail establishments in the town is twenty percent of the package store license issued. Wareham currently has thirteen such licenses issued, which means that the town has already met the minimum requirement of allowing three dispensaries. The Planning Board does not see any benefit in increasing the number of facilities, especially when many neighboring communities have already accepted such establishments. The proposal would remove the limit of three licensed marijuana retailers and allow for an unspecified amount of licenses, which the Planning Board believes could lead to potential issues and complications.
Thank, thank you. This is a citizen's petition article, and I, I believe that the petitioner is, um, here, so I'm gonna recognize you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jaco Arinta. Um, I'm here petitioning Article thirteen. Um, I'm a fifth generation, generation farmer and resident of Wareham, and I wanted to tell you about why I believe that this is not only about cannabis and the licenses, but free enterprise and job opportunities for my generation and residents of this town. Not only would this be an opportunity for residents, this would be an opportunity for Wareham as a whole. By limiting the amount of licenses that can operate, we're allowing cannabis to fail within our town. Tax revenue collected from cannabis sales dropped from four hundred twenty-eight thousand last fiscal year, ending in six thirty, twenty twenty-three, to an estimate of a hundred and fifty thousand for the current fiscal year. That's two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars less. Uh, that's also the number projected for fiscal year twenty-five. Simultaneously, sales are increasing statewide. Why are we allowing our cannabis revenue and jobs to be collected by other towns? Taxes for residents are rising, and we're allowing revenue to be lost. Brought this here, I know it's a bit small for you guys to see, but these are, um, the gross sales statewide. You can see as it's increasing, uh, twenty nineteen was at point five billion, and from twenty twenty-three, we're at a one point five nine billion, so it's quite an increase. Uh, I really believe that this would be, uh, an improvement for our town. You're probably wondering why sales are going up in other towns while down in Wareham. It's because people are choosing to shop in other towns. With towns without a limit on retail have more innovative stores, healthy competition, better pricing for the consumer. It's not only resulting in more sales, but more revenue collected by the towns where the stores operate. Limiting retail locations allows for a protected market that is not influenced by market trends, expanding competition, which drives consumers elsewhere. Additionally, the cannabis industry is abundant with opportunity to pursue a variety of different skills and interests without the requirement of a college degree. Some things you can learn and build a resume in this industry are cultivation, manufacturing, botany, inventory, management, business, finance, data collection, computer and technology skills, production, culinary, lab work, art, and many more than I could possibly list. I'm an example of this industry. I've worked in this industry for four years since I became of age in twenty twenty. The limit of three stores was a very reasonable way to transition into legalization and see what the impacts of the stores would have on this town. But now that we've had all three retail licenses open for the past two years, we've seen that very little has changed, except that the adults that would like to consume cannabis have a safe and legal way to obtain it. I encourage you to consider how few negative impacts additional licenses would have, and more importantly, how much of a positive impact it would create. I've considered Wareham my home for my entire life, and I see my home benefit from the success of an industry that I'm passionate about, giving me a sense of purpose and pride. I hope you can consider these positive impacts that this budding industry can offer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Arinta. Um, I need to make a ruling on this particular article, and, um, my ruling is this, that the, um, article and the motion, um, has been, as has been presented, um, this, this evening is out of order, so I'm going to rule it out of order and not available to go forward. And my reasoning on this is as follows, um, that the motion and the article are too vague to really know what the intention is. Um, it says to amend the zoning bylaws, it does not make any reference to any particular zoning bylaw, what the particular change might be, et cetera. So, that will be my, uh, that would be my ruling. And I have actually consulted with town council on this as well. So, entertain a motion to dismiss the article.
So moved.
Madam Moderator?
Uh, let me just, let me just, um, acknowledge this, been a motion made and seconded to dismiss this article. Um, is there anything to be said on the motion to dismiss the article? Mrs. Ekstrom.
Well, I just wanted to ask a question in general about, um, the marijuana retailers. I just wanted to know, um, are the licenses determined like a liquor license through the state, or are they determined like a used car license through the Board of Selectmen?
So, um, to answer the question, Mr. Slaven.
It's based, uh, with the Cannabis Control Commission, which, uh, is failing badly on this whole program. Uh, they basically, what they did is they based it off the liquor licenses for the town. Also, in their wonderful wisdom, uh, we had like two point two, uh, so we didn't get two retail, we had to actually round up, which I'd never seen happen before. Uh, if you would like, I'd like a very quick comment. Uh, we have three retail operations. When VeriLife came in, uh, the money coming in was unbelievable. They were number four in the state. We have, if everybody drives around anywhere here or anywhere, there are multiple marijuana retailer available everywhere. So, what's happened is our revenue is actually fifty percent lower than it was when VeriLife was going at their premium. I'm expecting at least one of our retail stores to fail. The retail stores are failing all over the state. Their equity program is failing, and if you look at Colorado, which is one of the leaders in marijuana, there is a mass exodus of people going out of the marijuana business. You're gonna see the same thing happen here, and I'm afraid that our Cannabis Control Commission, I'm gonna probably get in trouble, but, uh, we use the word fubai as what they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll give you, we'll give you that since it's your last town meeting, Mr. Slaven. So, um, uh, actually, what's before the body right this moment is a motion to dismiss, dismiss the article. Is there anything further to be said on the motion to dismiss the article? Yes, the young lady on the left.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak, madam. My name is Hannah Burrows, and I worked at a dispensary in Wareham for about two years. I was assigned the position of shift leader. I have seen a variety of people come in, along with people my age, but even people thrice so, and I have seen what has helped a lot of people change their lives and change their lives for the better by adding marijuana to their daily consumption. I'm not here to argue that it will make everyone better, and I'm not here to argue that it's for everybody. However, I have a lot of people who are veterans coming in who really need the pain management and the things that we can provide for them. However, there is a limited influx of what we can provide due to the limit of the size of the buildings oftentimes that we work in. And because of the limit on the amount of dispensaries allowed in Wareham, it really lowers our ability to, well, have a variety of things that we can do on the back end. They already have to do a lot in terms of zoning bylaws in order to go through Massachusetts legally, and a lot of times, it makes people lose their jobs because we have a lot of, uh, questionable flaws pertaining to how many places we can own. And due to the triple C, a lot of times, places will be out of business before they even really properly start it up. I'm not here to say that they are a perfect industry, but I'm here to say that if we keep cutting it at the seed, we're never going to see any growth.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Schultz, on the, on the, um, she was standing earlier, so I allowed her to speak on the substance, but this, this would be on the motion to dismiss the article?
I'm standing to speak in favor of the motion to dismiss, uh, based on the grounds that Josh read, but primarily, as written, the, the Planning Board and the zoning enforcement officer cannot act on this bylaw. It's, as you said, too vague. It's also my opinion, having tried to get by, the zoning bylaws written for the last four years, that the A G will not, uh, support this bylaw as formatted. So, I think the motion to dismiss is in the best interest of the town, and if the, uh, the proponents want to come back with a properly formatted, uh, bylaw, I think they could do that. But this, this bylaw is stated, can't be enforced.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on the motion in front of us, which is a motion to dismiss this article? this article? Seeing no one else standing to be heard, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor on the motion to dismiss the article, please signify by stating aye. All those opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes by a majority voice vote. Article eight.
Article eight through you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve the amount of $1,543,542 to the Emergency Medical Services Salary and Wages Account, $310,550 to the EMS General Expense Account and further to authorize a sum of money and estimate receipts of the Emergency Medical Services Account to be used to offset said appropriations in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53E.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded on Article eight. May I have the vote and recommendation of the select board?
Select board votes favorable action 301.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted 800.
Is there anything further to be said on the motion under Article eight?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is, just so everybody knows, the EMS, so that's our town ambulance service, it is run through the receipts that it generates, so it's called an offset receipt. That's why you don't see this within the town's budget, and it's a separate article that you're voting. So basically, they are funded by the monies that they generate through charging. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on the motion under Article eight? Are you coming down to be heard? No, I'm sorry. I was mistaken. I see no one standing waiting to be heard, so we'll go to vote on Article eight, which requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. Passes by a majority voice vote. Article three. So before you make a motion, I'm going to have our deputy moderator, Mr. Joseph Ashley, moderate for this particular article, since it does involve the town moderators per diem.
Madam Moderator, before you go, this is, hopefully not in the future, but this is Mr. Ashley's last meeting with us for his term right now, and I'd like to thank him for all his hard work and what he's done for the community.
I move that the town vote pursuant to MGL Chapter 41, Section 108, to set the compensation of certain elected officials as follows. Town moderator, $125 per diem.
Second.
Can I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Board of Selectmen, excuse me, Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
And the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action 800.
Brenda Ekstrom?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Could I ask, why are the registrars of voters no longer being paid? We used to pay them $800 a year. They are required, we are required to have them under Mass General Law, Chapter 51, Section 15, and other sections. But they're the ones that, if there are recounts, electorials, those type of things. I know the clerk does them, but we are still required to have them. I think there has to be one from each political party and that type of stuff, so is there a reason why we are no longer paying them? Thank you.
Well, I do question if that's in the scope of this particular article, but I will, if anybody has any answers to some of those questions. All right, seeing no one to answer the question, we should be able to move on.
Okay, then I would like to make an amendment to amend. The article, if you read the warrant, it says compensation of certain appointed and elected officials. I am making an amendment, and I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, again, I have mice behind me yapping. So I'd like to amend Article three to say compensation of certain appointed and elected officials to add registrars of voters $800 a year each.
Can I see that amendment in writing, please? So we have an proposed amendment to amend this to allow for registrars $800 each. Is there a second to the amendment? I did hear a second to the amendment. If you could just give that to me, so I have it to look at. Thank you. Are you standing to speak?
Yes, I am. My name is Trishun Wertz.
Was there a second to the amendment?
Neighborhood one, straight. I have a question on this article. First of all, I think it's quite appropriate for this town to be able to set compensation for certain elected officials. What I don't like about this article is it's too vague about what officials at what point. So I don't know, are we paying our heads of committees that are appointed? Are we paying Board of Selectmen members, which other towns do? But I find that this is too vague. We already have a change to the amendment, a request for this article change, and I would just dedicate it to what we pay for the officials that are running this, moderating this meeting and other meetings where we require their services. If we want to put something-
I do have a question of whether you're asking a question or making a statement?
I'm making a statement, and I'm asking a response, all in one. First of all, I think the article is too vague. I want to know exactly what positions that would be open to be paid. It's different in every town. Right now, we're really asking that we approve what we pay moderators, and I think that stands alone. What we do for other positions, whether they're elected or appointed, I think it needs to be spread out, because in other words, you put this in, and anything can be approved without coming further in front of the population.
To answer the question?
Would you like to answer that question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through to the previous speaker. Hi, Trish, how are you? I agree with you in part, but we'll probably try to elaborate a little bit. Chapter 41, Section 108 is the statute that permits Town Meeting to annually set payment for certain elected and appointed officials. You'll see an article that's pretty much in this same exact form in every municipality. The specificity as to who gets paid what comes up under the motion. So, for example, when you said that, you know, you'd only want to see the moderator be paid the, what are we proposing to give him, $125 per meeting? If Town Meeting voted in favor of this motion, the only person who would be paid under this article would be the town moderator at a rate of $125 per diem. So in other words, it's not an open-ended grab bag of, you know, let's pay committee chairman and whoever. The only thing that would be authorized would be exactly what is set out in the motion.
So, thank you. If this is the motion, it's fine. If what was in this handout was the motion, it's too vague. So if this is what we're voting on, I'm comfortable with it.
Point of order.
I think traditionally, one second. Traditionally, this article has only been separated because it pertains specifically to the town moderator, and the rest of the elected officials are taken through our budget.
Point of order.
Point of order?
Thank you. The motion states elected officials, not appointed officials. Okay, we're voting on, it says right there, elected officials. Thank you.
Mr. Slavin?
Thank you. Actually, Mrs. Ekstrom, some years ago, tried to get the Board of Selectmen paid, when she was not a select board member. It was turned down pretty badly. The only people I believe in the town of Wareham that really get paid is your presidential committee for your Fire and Water District. I'm not sure everybody understands what they get, because I made a comment and nobody liked. They get $5,000 a year, plus they get health and life insurance, which is worth over $30,000, times all that by eight, and that's what we're all paying for. We have never paid any of our elected officials for the municipality of Wareham. Way back, we had, I think, three selectmen, and we had a secretary. They were paid way back then, it's been years. You would have to specify in the article that anybody else except the moderator was paid, basically. Go ahead, Brenda.
Thank you, and thank you for remembering that I was trying to get, not when I was a selectman, because I know how much work you guys do. So I was trying to get you guys at least a stipend to cover your gas, at least.
Let's try to stick to the article-
Maybe someone could write me a $5,000 check for 12 years.
The article before us is in amendment to amend Article three?
Yes.
I've looked at your amendment.
Yes.
I've heard you out, but I really feel that this only pertains to elected officials.
If you look at Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, I believe it is certain elected and appointed officials. And if you can, you can check with Town Council, and I believe he could verify that?
I'm asking.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Far be it from me to intrude on the authority of the moderator to determine what's within the scope of any given article. That's solely the moderator's prerogative. However, Chapter 41, Section 108, does await to setting the compensation of both elected and/or appointed officials. So were the, so if you chose to accept it within the scope, you certainly could accept an amendment that called for the payment of $800 per annum per registrar, even though they're appointed rather than elected. So you could do that. That's within your authority if you choose to, but naturally, it's the moderator's discretion as to whether to do so.
Thank you. And again, also, everything that we have read as citizens for the past 45 days or so says on Article three, compensation of certain appointed and elected officials, that is in the warrant, the handwritten warrant that we have been reading. Just because it says it up there does not mean, I understand that's what you guys wrote in the last day or two, but this is what we are reading.
So as, so we are going to allow a vote on the amendment?
Thank you.
So anyone in favor of the amendment, which would also add an additional $800 for the registrars, each registrar of voters per year? Please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed to that idea, please indicate by saying nay. The motion fails. We are now back to the main motion, which is to pay the moderator $125 per diem. Anything further to be said? Brenda?
Thank you. You could say gentlewoman to your right or to your left, whichever way I am. Thank you. Then I would like to make this zero. If we're all volunteering, there's no sense in paying anyone, so I would like to make an amendment for the amount to be zero. Thank you.
Is there a second on that motion? I'm hearing no second on that motion, so we'll just continue to keep the motion before us to pay the town moderator. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. It passes by a two-third majority vote.
Oh, I know. So thank you, Mr. Ashley. I'd like to echo what Mr. Sullivan had said. Mr. Ashley has very dutifully and served as deputy moderator, and so I just want to thank him as well, and wish him well in his whatever future endeavors. Article seven. Is there a motion on Article seven?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from levy, state, and local receipts the sum of $69,846,000 and transfer $850,000 from the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund, $272,950 from FY25 Community Preservation Act estimated revenues, and $51,250 from harbor service permit fees to fund the FY25 budget as presented in the Finance Committee report.
A motion made and seconded, is there a second on the motion on Article seven? Motion made and seconded on Article seven. May I have the report and recommendation of the select board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action 800.
Bear with me, bear with me.
I'll speak to it in the meanwhile.
Okay. Bear with me a moment. I'm looking for my list of the-
After the, when you're going to vote the budget, they're call out the lines to certain departments, wages and expenses, and that's what Madam Moderator will go through. But before that, just if you go to your Finance Committee report in the addendum, you will see this is the budget that we'd be going through. So it has the actual FY23, some of the updated. What the updated means is we get about 25% of our state aid from, our revenue from state aid from the Commonwealth, and last year, they didn't set this year's budget, I think, until about September or so. So we're always trying to figure out what's going to happen. And after they set their budget, that's when we finally know what our state aid and assessments, which are the costs they assign to us. In crafting the budget, you look at it, you'll see what the real estate taxes are, then the two and a half authorized. When you hear proposition- When you hear proposition two and a half, that's the two and a half that they're talking about. New growth is new construction or other projects that come online, and the debt exclusion, that's the excluded debt for the elementary school, and that's just an in and out from the expenses later. Whatever the expenses are, is what, what the revenue is. You'll see that for, in twenty-three, when you go to the school aid, we, we had from twenty-three, twenty-four, really nice jump. There was a, there was about a fifty percent cut in the charter school aid, but chapter seventy was really pretty good for us. Fast forward to what we're looking at FY twenty-five, if you've heard a lot of the issues, instead of, you know, six or seven figures of aid increase, we received sixty-seven thousand dollars. Well, it doesn't cover the increases, obviously, that's needed for a school budget that's an operating budget of over thirty million dollars. And then you'll see the other aid is the general government, that's unrestricted. Veterans benefits is a reimbursement for the benefits that we pay to veterans within the communities, and the rest of them are pretty self-explanatory. So our next biggest revenue forms are the, are the local receipts, so that's from motor vehicle excise, you can see some small increases. Really, our big ones are some of the licensing permits that have been trending very favorably. And then the other big one was investment income. Well, as we all know, the rates for borrowing have gone up, so, but that also means that our investment income has gone up with, as we use some of these stable rates. So that was one of the things that really helped us offset what was, which has been a tough year. Going through then to the, when you go to the departmental expenses, for, when you go through the town, they're all contractual, except for there, there's two. One, we've put an additional employee into the council on aging. Council on Aging Directors, as you know, that's been, was basically defunded on one point. We've got an excellent council on aging director that's brought back a lot, and I think it's, it's more active than I've ever seen it. And, you know, we're trying to support what she's been doing, so very nicely done. And the other one is in the personnel services, which is the HR. We brought in a part-time employee as a floater, so that when we have employees out, you have them in sick, this person floats from each of the departments, and she's, you know, I think a lot of people joke, if we could clone her, we'd be a lot better off in this world. And, you know, usually, it's, it's not about the person, it's the position. We need that position to be full-time now because there's such need. We'll have, we'll have multiple departments requesting the person. So we have moved that to a full-time position. So what was a point five FTE would now be a, be a one FTE. So overall, for the, you know, when you look at the increase across all of the town departments, you know, from, from general government to public safety, to some of the, the, you know, library, council on aging, things such as that, we're looking at about a six hundred and forty thousand dollar increase. For the school budget, we're looking at a one point one two million dollar increase. We know that's not what they've needed, but it's what's available. Our real other big budget drivers, cost-wise, was the pension, going up about five hundred and seven thousand. We were lucky, the, our general liability and our workers' comp, we've been running very well on the rates that has to do with, you know, we've been doing a lot more trainings. So we're really looking at, and actually, about a three percent increase on those, which has been favorable. State and county assessments increased over five hundred thousand. The state and county assessments are, that's school choice, charter school sending, retired teachers' health insurance, there's the, GATRA is paid through that, mosquito control, and a few other smaller ones. And then the, those are really, the other one was Upper Cape Cod Tech, which you've already voted on, so you don't actually vote as part of this budget, but we show it as one of the other budget articles, increased about four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So that's really, when crafting this budget, those were, those were most of our drivers, to give you a background. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. So as we have in the past, I am going to read through the various line items for the expenses on the FY twenty-twenty-five budget submission. If anyone wishes to comment on or has a question about any of these items, please simply call out, keep your voice up loud, but call out hold. I'll make a notation of your hold, and after I'm done reading the various line items, and we will go back to any items that have been held. Town meetings, wages. Town meetings, expenses. Selectmen's, wages. Selectmen's, expenses. Town administrator, wages. Town administrator, expenses. Finance committee, expenses. Reserve fund. Town accountant, wages. Town accountant, expenses. Audit. Assessors, wages. Assessors, expenses. Treasurer, wages. Treasurer, expenses. General services, expenses. Legal services. Personnel services, wages. Personnel services, expenses. Pardon me. Information management technology, wages. Information man, management technology, expenses. Information management technology, communications. Town clerk, wages. Town clerk, expenses. Elections and registrations, wages. Elections and registrations, expenses. Planning and community development, wages. Planning and community development, expenses. Sick bonus, wages. Police wages. Police expenses. Capital. Inspection services, wages. Inspection services, expenses. Division of natural resources, wages. Division of natural resources, expenses. Municipal maintenance and public buildings, wages. Municipal maintenance and public buildings, expenses. Snow and ice, wages. Snow and ice, expenses. Streetlights, general. Board of Health, wages. Board of Health, expenses. Council on Aging, wages. Council on Aging, expenses. Commission on Disabilities. Veterans Council. Library, wages. Library, expenses. Historical District Commission. Net school spending. Non-net school spending, public transportation. Fixed costs. Debt exclusion, new school debt principal. Debt exclusion, new school debt interest. Debt exclusion, exclusion, pardon me, new school debt short-term interest. Debt principal. Debt interest, long-term. Debt interest, short-term. Community preservation, debt principal. Community preservation, debt interest. Harbor service, debt principal. Harbor service, debt interest. Other costs. Veterans assessments. Serped assessment. Employee benefits. Pension retirement contribution. Workers' compensation, one eleven F. Town insurance, general and professional liability. Medical insurance. Life insurance. FICA, Medicare. I have not heard any holds on the budget. Is there anything to be said generally on the budget article? Seeing no one standing waiting to be heard, we'll go to a vote on the budget article. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion under the budget article, as stated on the, the screen, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Article five.
I move that the town vote to approve Article Five as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article Five. May have the vote and recommendation of the select board.
Select Board recommends favorable action on four zero zero.
May have the vote and recommendation of the finance committee.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action eight zero zero.
So this is a, um, article to accept any reports of boards and committees. Are there any such reports of boards and committees which you would wish to have the town meeting hear? Seeing no one rise, we'll go to a vote on Article, the motion under Article Five. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Is there a motion on Article ten?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate seven million, twelve thousand, fifty-six dollars from the water pollution control facility enterprise revenues, and one million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars from the WPCF betterment revenue, betterment reserves, to defray WPCF direct costs, and that eight hundred and fifty thousand, as appropriated under Article Seven of the spring twenty-twenty-four annual town meeting, be used for WPCF indirect costs to fund the total fiscal year twenty-twenty-five operation costs of the water pollution control facility enterprise fund.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article ten, may have the report and recommendation of the select board.
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
May have the report and recommendation of the finance committee.
Finance Committee approves seven zero one.
Is there anything further to be said on Article ten? Seeing no one standing, we'll go to a vote on Article ten. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay.
Nay.
It passes by a majority voice vote. So we've, um, we've acted on all the articles within the annual town meeting. I entertain a motion to dissolve the town meeting.
I move to dissolve the town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to dissolve the town meeting. All in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Voting with your feet. Thank you very much for attending, um, attending, everyone, taking time out from your schedule.